I'll start with, and it seems like some people might be showing up late, so we'll just try and catch them later. But Katie Bell is here, Andrew Eloquin. I'm here, Dave Liu has an excused absence, Tim Motley.
On board.
See him, thank you, Ryan Olson.
Here.
Brenda Spears. Marlene, we know she's excused, she's traveling for work. Paul Adair.
Here.
And then Martha and Mary are both excused, right? Okay. Is that Brenda? No, okay.
I can show the doors open.
Okay, I don't.
We have a formless.
Five.
We have five, because we don't have any decisions today. Okay. Everybody have a chance to review the minutes from the last meeting in September? Any corrections or revisions we noted? Okay, with that, the minutes from the last meeting are approved. Do we have any public comments? Doesn't through. Okay. No one let me know of, and so we'll move on to regular business. And I think the first item. Jeff here. Right. Even this, the 2025.6 proposed budget update. Grim.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, a little grim. Yeah, thank you all, good evening, thought it would be appropriate and timely to provide you an overview of how the budget process is shaping up. Thanks, Tim. As you may know, the city's operating budget is on a biennial budget, so council adopts our operating budgets at two-year increments. So we're just wrapping up the 2023-2024 budget. We are now. That was impressive. Yeah, okay. That was really. So we are now endeavoring on the 2025-2026 budget. This budget was put together and proposed by administration as just, I guess, a little bit of civics 101. You may, you may know this, but think of the, the city, think of the mayor, the elected mayor as the executive. And we as staff work in the executive branch. So the executive and the executive branch put together the proposed budget, and then that is given to the city council, who serves as the legislative branch. And they intern review, take a look, and ultimately adopt the budget. So we're now in that process where the mayor and administration have proposed the budget that was presented to council on October 28th. We're now in budget deliberations with city council. There was a recent budget deliberation meeting on the 12th of November, and there'll be a few more adoptions likely in December. So I thought I would take this time to just sort of talk through that proposed budget, what it means for us as a department. As Chris mentioned, the word grim, you know, as we, as a city headed into the 2025-26 budget, you can go to the next slide. It became pretty clear earlier in the year as finance was looking at revenue projections and how were revenues coming in? In particular, general fund revenues, the two predominant sources of general fund revenue for the city are property taxes and sales tax. Sales tax in particular, and even in more particular, construction sales taxes that was coming in lower. It was beginning to shed light on some concerns on the 25-26 budget and how how that'll frame up and be shaped. So I'll give a little bit more of an overview on general fund budget, talk more specifically about the departmental budget impacts and highlights for us. And then talk a little bit more about adoption process. And in a way, this conversation, this context will fold really nicely into our work plan discussions. It'll be the next topic with you all tonight, as we start looking ahead. So this is a slide, a number of these slides were presented by the finance department on the 28th of October. They gave a good overview. So as finances owners of these slides, I will probably not do them adequate justice, but this is a general sense of how general funds are expended within the city predominantly, when you look at public safety, police, municipal court and fire. That really makes up a predominance of the general fund budget. Parks and community services, our department is also a pretty large reliance on the general fund. And so when I say parks and community services, that's all aspects of our department. So that's park operations, park maintenance, all of our recreation programs and recreation programming out of the four facilities that we operate. Out of community center pool, senior center, Pickering Barn, park planning and development is also part of our department. Human services as well, and arts programs are in our department as well. We are also, along with a portion of the obviously expenditure of the general fund, we're also a contributor to the general fund in that we provide, we earn a lot of program-driven revenues. So for those, these last two slides, just for general context and very broad numbers, our department operating budget is roughly, I'm just going to put in round numbers, $10 million. That's our expenditure for the whole department. Our revenue, when you look at everything from field rentals to picnic shelter rentals to all of our recreation programs, rentals at the Pickering Barn. We bring in, we contribute about three and a half million dollars of revenue. So if you were to think of what is sort of the net operating cost of the department, it's about six and a half million dollars roughly.
Question?
Yeah, oh, please.
Flip back to the revenue slide. Thank you. Oh, sorry, no, the expenditure one, I'm sorry. So they didn't give a percent for parks and they didn't give a percent.
I know. I noticed that, yeah.
Twenty something for parks, maybe?
Yeah, I think we're somewhere around 20, yeah, I mean, looking at the, yeah, I can get that and confirm it, but you're right, I don't know off the top of my head.
And then what are transfers out?
Good question, so transfers outs or expenditures would be things the general fund is contributing to and maybe other funds within the, so the overall city budget. I think, I think internal transfers. So, again, I'm not going to do this justice, but our city operating budget is more than just the general fund, right? There's utility funds, there's a variety of other sort of colors of money. And so from time to time, some of those funds transfer in to the general fund, other cases, the general fund transfers out, some of its yeah, transfer out expenditures.
Thank you.
Yeah. So with that in mind, sort of that broad context of sort of what it, what's the general fund contribution? And overall, general fund investment that is made in parks and community services of roughly, again, six and a half million dollars. We can now sort of get into what this means for our department. We still have a number of priorities, right? And as we sort of talk through the, how do we absorb reductions in this department? How do we also, as we absorb those reductions, understand what our core priorities are? And it really been identified by community as well as mayor and council. And these really touch on the major operations of the department. We are the stewards of your parks, open space and trail system, right? That doesn't go away as we look at reductions. It's really hard to close or shutter portions of a park, open space or trail system. We're also clearly through the capital budget and how things have been budgeted in capital, and I should, I'll pause myself real quick. So I'm, those highlights that we just gave about the operating budget and expenditures, the capital budget is separate. That's something different, right? So we, we delve in both, but knowing that capital budget has projects, programs, investments, that remains a priority. How do we continue to reinvest into the park system? As well, human services has been deemed and really is a high priority. How are we serving those who are in crisis within the community? How are we managing the unhoused encampments throughout town? Both for meeting those individuals where they're at and really getting them connected to services, but also as being a good land steward. In many ways, right, as we want to manage public lands for what they're intended, that's a key part of really having a smart emergency housing program, a smart homeless outreach program. Other priorities with the four facilities and a lot of our programs busting at the seams. Obviously continued provision of rec program services and events are a priority. And then arts really wraps up our priority as well in terms of how do we continue to make those investments? Interesting point about arts, a majority of the arts program is not funded through the general fund. So another one of those color of money things that I was saying earlier. So what you're going to see earlier in some of the reductions and some of these, what these priorities speak to is our arts manager, Amy Dukes, and I are going to be working really, really closely in 25-26, looking for additional new revenue sources. What's been happening with that arts fund is for decades, it's, it's sole revenue source is admissions tax. So whenever you go to a movie, pretty much in any town, or you go to a sporting event, usually there's an admissions tax that that local jurisdiction is charging. For us, our admissions tax is really solely the movie theaters. Well, as I think you all know, the entertainment industry has changed pretty dramatically since the pandemic. And so we're seeing that in admissions tax revenues as that goes down. That's put a real pressure on the arts programs and the art fund. The general fund is not in a position to absorb that impact. And so what this sort of priority alludes to is is arts are a priority and general fund is not in a position to prop up or further support that art program. We need to find some alternative and some new revenue sources for arts. That's something we talk about a lot here with the park board, but I just wanted to give you that broad context. Amy works really closely with the arts commission, and they do, they do great work. And I guess for context to giving you a highlight of the whole department, we have multiple boards on, in this department as well, right? A human services commission that's working really, really closely with our human services team on those priorities. On the cemetery board that's working really, really closely on the cemetery, as you might see that coming up through this. But again, brought over. So next slide. This really starts to get into the reductions and I guess some context for these reductions. As through the summer, late summer into fall, as that general fund impact was becoming more and more visible. As we as a department worked with administration on putting our proposed budget together. That net general fund investment of six and a half million dollars was clearly going to be reduced. The reductions that I'm going to lay out, that what the proposed budget is really presenting in terms of our operational impact. It's about a million dollar a year general fund impact to our operating budget. And so that six and a half million dollar net operating budget now in 25-26 is going to be about five and a half million dollar net operating investment, if you're, if you're following me with that math. So that represents about a 15% impact to our net operating. Obviously, the ability to continue to earn revenue through our programs is a real priority in that as well. And as we look at making reductions, we realize if we make reductions in the wrong places, that could have a doubling impact in that we're not able to, to earn revenue. And that's going to compound, compound the reduction. And so with that in mind, I'll highlight sort of by division, the reductions and what those impacts will really mean to us operationally. So within park planning. And again, these were some really, really hard decisions because they impact real people. Whenever you talk staff reductions and layoffs, you're talking about people that are doing really good work, and they're not being asked to leave because of a performance issue, it's, it's because of what can we afford and not afford. And so within park planning, you've had to make the hard decision to eliminate the senior park planner position. You've met Julie Casada earlier this year, that's Julie's position. That's going to result in a decreased rate of projects in terms of what we're able to get done. Obviously, we have some current projects on the plate that are, are going to continue. As I'll touch on the capital budget, we also have some capital funds made available for 25-26. And so Robin and I are going to work really, really closely on what that work plan looks like, what's that cadence of projects to make sure we're creating the cadence that one park planning and development manager, a park planning team of one is able to, is able to do. Within park operations, a park maintenance team, it means the elimination of a 0.75 full-time park maintenance worker two position. Also looking at some reductions of our part-time seasonal staff. In parks, the year-round workflow varies. As you can imagine, there's a, there's a growing season in, in Western Washington, right? So our workload in park operations really looks like a bell curve if you look at it through the year. So we have a real reliance on part-time staff for those high, that high season work. We're also looking at making reductions to our irrigation, to watering, as well as some of the turf maintenance practices we've been able to put into place these last three or four years that have really made a huge difference. We're going to need to ratchet those down a little bit. Within recreation, the elimination of one recreation coordinator position, that was a currently vacant position. Still, it's an impact though. So that's going to mean working with the recreational team to look at how we absorb that and look at reducing program levels in some ways across all four of those facilities, the senior center, the community center, the pool and Pickering Barn. So that the remaining recreation programming team can still provide great work. Also keeping in mind revenue generating programs and non-revenue generating programs. How do we still retain some of those non-generating, high public value, low cost recovery recreation programs? Because those are really important, provide tremendous community value. So we will be balancing, balancing that out as we go. Within human services, we've basically looked at reorganizing or resizing the leadership team within human services. In 23-24, we had a supervisor position that oversaw our behavioral health program, a human services coordinator and a human services manager. What this reduction through some attrition will be transitioning to a leadership team of two people. Where we'll have a manager position and a senior coordinator position that will be providing leadership and direction for our human services group. Within arts, I sort of gave that context a little earlier as we're dealing with reduced admissions tax revenues. We're making an appropriate reduction to the grant program in 25-26 by about 35%, roughly a third to what that grant program looks like. The arts commission and Amy do a great job of setting that grant program together, setting criteria. And in fact, the 25-2025 grant program is out on the streets right now. And so as they review those applications and award those, they'll be awarding a reduced amount of funding these next couple of years as we again seek some new revenue sources for the arts program to ensure that continues going forward in 27, 28 and beyond. And then lastly, within department leadership, so we are a department, as you hear me talk about these divisions, that is very, we're much wider than we are deeper. So we have a department leadership team that had management, a manager position over all five of those divisions. And then Santi and I as the full park administration division of two people. So to reduce the size of that department leadership team, given the, the size of this reduction that we're having to absorb rather than just having front-end frontline impacts, it means the elimination of the recreation manager position. That position is currently occupied by Brian Bernstein. In a staff person who has done great, great work over many, many years. So that's, all of these are tough, that's a really, really tough one as well. And so what it means is we'll be, I've been working with the recreation leadership team, the recreation supervisor team as well as department leadership to figure out what, how we operationalize that. How we continue to provide the leadership and support that that recreation team needs. Just announced to the department earlier this week, as we work through a variety of options. Rick Still, who was, is the park operations manager, has served a role for a number of years of his career as a parks and recreation director for the city of Tuaquilla, so has experienced, great experience both in park operations and day-to-day leadership in recreation will be taking on that responsibility in 25-26. So so pretty significant reductions within the department. But we have continued work to do. I think that maybe speaks to the next slide, but before I get there, maybe I'm just going to pause and see if there's any questions you all might have. No, I'll continue on. So next slide. Additions, not a lot of additions in the 25-26 budget, but two that are grant funded, will be seeking grant funding for. Again, this is a hard budget, budgets in scarcity are really, really hard because even when you're in scarcity mode, there's growth needed. There's abundance happening in programs. And so I think both of these are a bit of a demonstration of that. You're familiar with the volunteer coordinator who's come on board, it's a 0.5 position. This really supports our Green Issaquah initiative. You know, Chris and I have given updates throughout the months on Green Issaquah. The, the, the community interest we're getting in those volunteer programs, the interest we're getting from the business community, REI, Costco and many others. Really, we, we need to increase capacity for that program. And so we, Dan Hints and I have been seeking grant funding. We're quite confident we're going to get, receive some grant funding that'll allow that position to go to a 0.75 position. So again, it wouldn't be a general fund impact, but it would be a way to us to increase operation of Green Issaquah, which is a really, really good thing. We're also going to seek grant funding for a first phase tree inventory coming out of, if you're familiar, the urban forest management plan, which, thank you for your recommendation on that. Actually, next week on the 19th of November, we're taking that to the city council committee for that adoption, assuming that adoption is going to happen. This tree inventory is really an important next step in really understanding some of the details, finer details of our, of our urban forest, again, grant funded. So the reason these additions go to city council is the way a municipal budget works or any budget works. We need to ask their authorization to expand at this new level. And though we're seeking alternative revenues to do it, we still need their okay to spend at that, at that higher level. So that's some highlights on the additions. And then last, and you saw in your packet, hopefully you had a time to review, we included the full narrative for the department. Sort of an overview of the budget impacts and the budget priorities. Probably a bit of a narrative of what I just shared with you all tonight. And then lastly, it also highlights the capital budget, which as I said earlier, is separate from our operating budget, but really, really important to our work. And frankly, really important to a lot of the interaction that you all have and provide us advisory guidance on as the park board. These are the proposed additions to the capital budget. Many of these projects you're familiar with, we've talked about them as, as the newly adopted park system plan really helped to inform what our 2025-2026 requests are. I think you'll be pleased to see some of our top priorities, Tippets Valley Park, and beginning to do some conceptual planning and some real important environmental review of that, of that site. We have funding for in 25-26, so that will mean kicking off some public engagement. Robin can touch on that a little bit more when we talk work plan update next. Also in terms of some important projects we've talked about, Central Park Pad 2, if you're familiar with Pad 2. With that, that is the existing pad that has the two grass baseball fields, very, very poor condition, soil conditions. So we want to do a renovation of that space to increase capacity, athletic field capacity. If you remember, big, big goal of ours in the park system plan, how do we, rather than building a bunch of new fields elsewhere, let's, let's increase the capacity, what we, what we have. So two really, really big projects on trail projects, East Sunset Trailhead improvements. East Sunset Trailhead is a very, very popular trailhead at the, really a gateway from Old Town up into West Tiger Mountain. So this would be improvements that would look at improved paving surfacing, adding a restroom, adding some really important support facilities to that very popular trailhead. You'll notice a couple of these projects are identified as programs. I think I've highlighted this in prior years, but important to note that we've added these capital programs into our, our capital budget. These are programs for really ongoing investments. Ongoing commitment to parks and open space acquisition in the future years. Playground equipment replacement, we've taken all 11 of our play systems throughout the park system and put those on a lifecycle and realize those age out. And we need to make sure we have funding to change those out from a safety and a, just a functionality purpose. A park amenity lifecycle replacement program, this is really looking at all of our amenities for benches and trash cans. And again, just all that stuff that is essential to a park system that again gets old and tired and needs to be swapped out. And then an irrigation replacement program as well. It's a really important system that we don't see, but provides some really, really important operational elements to, to the system. The last project, oh, trail repair program, that's, that's the other program. That's really intended for how are we making sure our existing and the assets and the amenities within our existing trails as those age out and lifecycle that we're keeping the trail system fresh. The Three Trails Crossing Asphalt Art Installation, that's a, that's a really long word, or long title, I should say, for, I think we've talked about this with the team. But really good timing in that we've just adopted a park plan. We're sort of, you know, how do we want to begin to brand Creeps to Peaks? What the Three Trails Crossing area is, is on Gilman Boulevard where the East Lake San Amish Trail ends and the Rainier Trail joins it. Also the Juniper Trail, which is a really, really key east-west trail connection, all converge on that intersection. You may notice when you're driving on Gilman, it's a scramble intersection, which means all traffic stops always and people can go always, pedestrians can go always, but it's, it's not really marked well. It doesn't necessarily feel safe for pedestrians. So we want to do what some other cities have done and really do an art installation. So Robin worked closely with Amy and really provide better publics, or better pedestrian safety. Provide a fun sort of whimsical way to call. Provide a fun sort of whimsical way to call out those trails a little bit better. And do it in a way, and perhaps a theme that introduces creeks to peaks as, as a bit of a vision. So relatively small investment could, that could be a really timely and impactful project.
I'm curious, are they like, is relations with that is yet, or is it still like, things are together? Because I use that intersection all the time. We go to the, we do run there a lot.
I love it. So no, nothing formal, I would say, well. We're also gonna be asking for some legislative dollars through the state legislative agenda to throw rollout and introduce creeks to peaks. I think in the coming months, we will have at least some ideas and concepts of what that starts to look like. If you look up with a Brookings Institute or look up street art or crosswalk art, you'll see some really cool examples that other, other cities have done. Not to say exactly what ours is gonna look like, but if you could picture Paul or any of you, as you've been there, the crossings themselves, I think we're gonna be relatively limited of what we can do in the right of way. Just from a durability standpoint, but think of the the landing areas in each of those as a canvas and a really cool opportunity to, to create some really colorful art. So love to, we'll definitely share, share with you as that starts to feel real. It comes, comes together. The last one, just so you know, transfer from general fund for turf replacement fund. You may recall, I think I've touched on this before, this is when I got here in twenty sixteen, I wanna say twenty seventeen or twenty eighteen, we worked with city council and created a turf replacement program where fifty percent of the revenue we earn on our synthetic turf fields goes into the capital program. So that it will help us replace that synthetic turf, knowing probably every ten, eleven years, we need to replace the carpet, if you will, on the top of that synthetic turf. So this is a way that current user fees can help with that capital replacement. And then fifty percent of those revenues stay in our operating budget to help with the maintenance of, of those, of those synthetic turf fields. So that's kind of an example of transfers in, in and out and things moving. So next slide. Yeah. I highlighted this a little earlier in the introduction, continued budget deliberations. We just had ours on November twelfth, November eighteenth will be the next budget deliberation. November twenty fifth is the next council regular meeting where they'll adopt the property tax rate, which by state statute is limited to only one percent or less. So it's, that's not a, it's not a huge controversial topic all that much. But that property tax adoption takes place on the twenty fifth and then file budget deliberations there in early December with a likely adoption middle of December. So thank you for giving me the chance to just give you a bit of an overview, a hard budget. As I said earlier, scarcity mode is, is, or just scarcity budgets are really, really hard. But I, I, I don't mean to put a rose colored glasses on this, but I, I think as a department, we wanna position ourselves in that there's still really, really important work to be done in twenty five, twenty six and years beyond. So we wanna make sure organizationally we are positioned to still continue to do that. Without, with, with also understanding some of our levels of service in park maintenance, some of our levels of service in recreation programs will be, will be reduced. We're not gonna be as nimble as, as agile, agile as we've, we've been in some of the more recent years.
Might be more convenient just looking at city council meeting and stuff like that. I'm just curious to think how they're addressing how it fell short and offsetting in the next year. It's certainly, but it's just, I'm curious.
Yeah, great question. Again, I, I'll put it in my parks director terms. I think one of the, the biggest sort of how did we get here moments was how the city has managed construction sales tax. Right? So if you, sales tax comes in different forms, right? When we shop at Target and REI, right, that's consumer sales tax, that's fairly steady. Costco, right, that's been a fairly steady stream. Construction sales tax, so as big construction projects happen, there's sales tax there. As you can imagine, there, I mean, we're probably coming out of twenty years of pretty consistent construction happening in Isiqua. I think as we look ahead in the future, that might not be quite as steady. And so I, I think as policy, both finance and administration and council are looking at how do we lessen our reliance on construction sales tax and maybe do we consider that one-time revenue and maybe that shouldn't go into one-time. Or that shouldn't go into ongoing operational costs, that should go into maybe one-time capital type investment. So it's a, I think a big takeaway from the budget process. This budget situation. And Tim?
Tim?
Hey, thank you. Actually, you just answered the first part of my question, which was kind of how did we get here? The second part is, I don't know if I missed it, but do you have any kind of action plan in place to try to increase revenue beyond what we've been getting? And, you know, what, what does that look like? You know, I don't know if increasing fees or what have you might reduce usage, but you know, cutting expenditures is one part of the process, increasing revenue is another. And, you know, what are the options there?
Well, thank you for asking the question, Tim, because you're right, I didn't go into too many details. But part of that, absorbing that million dollar general fund impact is also increasing revenues. So, right, I mean, as we look at that, as I was saying earlier, that net investment is six and a half million down to five and a half million. One way that we are going to be achieving that net is, we wanna be careful with this, but we are proposing an increase in revenues of about two hundred thousand dollars a year that we'll be earning, both through a combination of increased fees, how we do some programming, how we look at swim lessons at the pool. For example, just a number of those areas that we've seen increased demand and opportunity to generate additional revenues. Yes, that's part of our proposed budget. Did that answer your question, Tim?
Yes, actually, it, it helps a lot. And I, you know, I don't know if this is the right place to fit this in, but there was all the discussion and planning around the expansion of the pool, and you just mentioned the pool, and it's obviously a busy place. Was there money that was set aside to help take next steps in terms of the pool expansion that maybe got cut or is that not affected? How, how does that lie?
Yeah, good question. That's not affected by operating budget. So the pool expansion project is really still but a, a capital project and idea. A little bit of, I guess, an update since you asked. Really, the, the, that's gonna be a very complex funding strategy to make that happen. I think as I've shared earlier, the first sort of step in that, in that funding strategy was the school district bond. So a portion of funding, about ten million dollars within that, that bond was to be sort of the first funding in for that potential pool expansion. That bond measure failed, so that pool expansion idea is still alive and kicking. I think as we continue to work with the school district and see what their plans are. We had lined up a sort of a, a sequence of other funds that once we got that first funding in, would, would seek to try and begin matching. There's some King County aquatic funding that we would seek and go for. Some state funding that we would go for. We'd been working with a friends of group, forming a friends of group that would begin to seek some private funding. So I think all of that is still a high potential, but sort of on hold until we get a better understanding of what the school district's next plans are. I'd also note that, you know, a, a big impetus, you might remember this even when we started the feasibility study a couple of years ago, was really trying to not be flat footed. Should a fourth high school be built, how do we make sure we have the needed capacity, the needed additional water to try and absorb, absorb that need? So, you know, as of now, with the school bond failure, there's no plans in place for that fourth high school at this point either. So stay tuned, we'll, we'll keep working with the school district.
Okay, thanks, Jeff.
So thank you. One, one last, I guess, comment I would make and just a, I guess, a general note. I will, I will try not to do this on too big of a soapbox, but you know, city council really relies on its residents for understanding the community priorities. And I would just encourage you, and maybe as we're thinking of work plan in twenty five, twenty six, as we're thinking of years ahead, how do you as a park board, how do you as individual residents? If you want to make sure your elected officials understand the priority that the park system is and that recreation programs are and that the arts are, or whatever you, not trying to put words in your mouth, but you know, if that's a real priority to this community and livability of this community, I think it's really important. And I can't act, I can't over emphasize the importance of your elected officials hearing from residents that that's a priority. They hear it from us all the time, that we're, we're, we're the, we're the hired guns, we're, we're paid staff. I think they value us, they trust us, but we don't carry the same weight. Our voice isn't the same weight as yours as residents. And so just as we look ahead and think ahead, I, I would love to partner with you, we as staff would love to assist you in any way and just making sure that, that voice is heard by that, by the elects. I don't think that, and I don't, I don't say that as a, oh my gosh, we missed it and that's why we're in this circumstance. It's not that at all. It's, it's more just a look ahead. Because I know, I know these investments into the park system, into rec programs, into the arts are, are a big priority to this community. We hear it all the time, so. Thanks. Thanks for being park board members.
Okay, so one of the next items is the park board work plan, also presented by Jeff Welling.
Yeah, I'm actually gonna save my voice a little bit and Asante is, is putting it up. I think all three of us will sort of tag team this, but I guess just as, as a ways of introduction. Again, hats off to Asante for creating this template. This is, you're familiar with this now, as, as we've been doing it, using this the last couple of years. Consider this sort of a very first draft as we have the twenty five, twenty six proposed budget now in front of us. We've populated this and it's just sort of a draft fashion. We obviously haven't set dates or priorities, but just wanna, I think, introduce this, begin to have a discussion, hear what your priorities are. So as we're sort of thinking through our workflow and cadence, we're also hearing your voice in what you would like to tackle or really focus on in twenty five, twenty six, so.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I'm not sure how many of you had time to sort of review this before the meeting, but I wanted to, to look through all of these items together as a group. And there is some space for, you know, if there is clarity needed on any of these items, if any of these feel like, hey, that might be a little bit too much for us to tackle all of these in this next year. And some space for the opportunity for some other things, if there's something that we sort of missed. So I have put this together based on, you know, some of our discussions that we've been having at our meetings over this last year. Some of the information that has come out of our park system plan update and some work that we've kind of identified. And then, of course, it's added on to those capital projects that Jeff went over in that last slide, sort of of the budget. So what we know is gonna be coming up for us and how much community impact or input we're gonna need from you all as our advisory board as well. So they're not in any particular order on here, they're just kind of how they got put in here. I will say that this format, we utilized this last year for our twenty twenty four work plan. And I wanna say we met almost all of those items on that work plan. So thank you to all of you for your contributions to that. All of those discussions really, you know, made a lot of progress in a way that allowed us to miss a couple of meetings even in there, because we were hitting all of our targets for, for action needed and discussion that we're having. You'll see maybe like one or two items that came back on this year that we just need to sort of finish up. We still worked on them, but they were always gonna need some, some further touches. So as you look at this, it might feel like a lot, but know that you have done a lot already last year. So the first one that I have on here is our level of service guidelines. And so this is directly related to work that was done through the park system plan update. So as you may recall, we looked at updating our level of service to really be a little bit more qualitative and reviewing all of our parks and how they're really functioning. And so we created these criteria that looked at mainly our big community parks and rated them based on a, a number of criteria. And as we were doing that, we realized these criteria don't necessarily meet all of our different park type classifications. And so we need to create probably separate criteria for each of those different park classifications. So our neighborhood parks, for instance, or our natural open spaces. So they're not all getting rated at, at the same, over the same criteria that our community parks are, they function very differently. And so part of this work is to look at that and develop different parameters for each of those different classifications. And then also looking at how we are reviewing this for success factors. So how are we knowing that this level of service and these criteria are really serving us properly into the future to help us look at what investments might need to be made, made in different parks? So that will probably be multiple touches, definitely led by Robin in our park planning department. But an opportunity for us to really dive a little bit deeper into those and hear from you all how you see them currently functioning, what you think makes those different parks and park types important. So that's one of our items for the work plan. And then you'll also see on here creeks to peaks. So we talked about this a little bit, but we are going to be seeking some funding, some state grant funding to start looking at some possible iconography branding for that creeks to peaks and, and identifying how we can add that to all of our, throughout our park system, including maybe some like ballards and signs and plaques, things that might get added to our already updated wayfinding projects, so our signs and some of our trail ballards, it might be something that has added to our trail. So this work will probably include, you know, some community outreach, reviewing survey results, probably looking at some design element things. It might mean a collaboration with the Arts Commission as well, to make sure that that sort of level is, is added in. And then our favorite one here at Park Board is Tippets Valley Park Revisioning Plan. I'm a little sad Marlene's not here to hear this one, but it's definitely on the work plan. The first part of this is really gonna be looking at feasibility studies. So what, what can we do within this park? What is gonna be possible? What might be some potential roadblocks? And so that review of that, looking at some programming options for this large park and area. And then the next thing will, will be community outreach. So both of those might not happen immediately in twenty twenty five, it might be like the start with the feasibility and the community outreach might bleed into twenty twenty six, but we wanted to have these on here as sort of a placeholder and opportunity.
I could add real quick, Asante, yeah, that feasibility study work would also
I could add real quick, Asante, yeah, that feasibility study work would also include some environmental review. Just understanding the complexities of that site.
So you're gonna see that in a few of these park planning projects, so this is really like the first step to all of these plans. It's not, you know, the the fun glamorous side of like, hey, we're just designing a park, we have to sort of see, you know, what that space can really. Um do and what what the environmental um landscape really has has to offer us. Um another big one on here, Central Park had two field improvements, Jeff mentioned um that space up. Uh at Central Park, those baseball fields really need some revisioning, um that will also need some feasibility study. Uh sort of that drainage um up there and what might be able to be done. Um and then looking at sort of what those programming options might be. Um we have talked about this a lot, but really looking at multi-use for those field spaces. Um currently there are two baseball fields, they're a little small for most baseball. Um and so what what can we do within that entire area, not just those fields, but that whole capital area up there? And make sure that it's multi-use. And then this one will be familiar to you all, our Heritage Tree Program. Um so Dan Hints has come a couple of times to the board to talk about that program. Um the Park Board is really, it is within your, I don't know if it's the bylaws or. If there's a specific city code, but there there is language that the Park Board really oversees that program. Um to administer it, and so um this will be sort of bringing that all back to really finalize. What that criteria is, what the application process is, what the review process is and your involvement in that. So I think we're in a really good place with that. Dan has like a pretty good framework, and so this is really just landing the plane and then being able to reopen that program for nominations. Um and then, of course, there will be some other um sort of updates on our ongoing capital projects, so. Um this is the fun for Robin of, you know, we've got Hillside Park on the way that we'll be finishing up in twenty twenty five. We have pedestrian park and senior center plazas that are starting very soon. Um and we'll be finishing up as well in twenty twenty five, and then we have a dog park that you all have been. Um a part of that will also be happening in twenty twenty five, so this is just sort of an opportunity to come back and talk to you all about sort of. Where we are in the process for all of those um and being able to celebrate those those projects as they finish. And then.
Celebrate we will.
I know, for sure. Um and then um this is a a pretty big one, but one that we have been talking about a little bit as a department. Um but uh the Isicua Municipal Code has different chapters within it that are um sort of. Overseen by the various departments um and they help us, you know, review. Codes and regulations for how our spaces or or functions are used. Um the parks, parks did not have a chapter within that Isicua Municipal Code. Um there are park elements. Different areas and some land use and and some other areas. Um and so this will really be a a large sort of review of all of those, pulling all of those little sparse park elements. Putting them together in one chapter and adding some additional um codes and regulations that we really need to make sure that our parks are functioning. Well, and that there are clear rules for use for those spaces. Um so that one's gonna be a very big project. It's also gonna be a very policy-heavy. Um project, so there will likely be lots of code review and sort of revisions. Um we will likely go to um the Planning Policy Commission because they also review sort of any code changes. Um and then be taking that to to City Council. Um so any of our new code and additions will have that, I don't know how many of you all were here through the Title eighteen. Um revisions that that just happened, that was a pretty lengthy process to update that section. Um and that the team that that spearheaded that went to multiple boards and commissions. So like that, the park chapter will also go to multiple boards and commissions for review as we're doing that work. Um this will definitely be a start in twenty twenty five, not gonna commit us to finishing that in twenty twenty five, but um. Definitely a a big chunk to start there.
I'm gonna say on this something, thank you for that overview. Yeah, this has been something that we've wanted to. It it's a gap that we've known about for a number of years, um and it's not an easy endeavor, but it's really, really important. Um a lot of cities, most cities um do have a a parks chapter that sort of consolidates all these general park rules. You know, you would see and 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 I think by consolidating it, we would also get a better understanding of, there's some gaps in our code that we don't address. Right? Of if, how do we, how do we steward electric bikes on our trails, e-bikes and as an example? How do we address encroachments um onto property, right? Or private private residential properties creep into our open space. We we need some stronger language, we need some code that that gives us guidance. Um and clarity on on some of that really important stuff. Those are just two, two examples of. Um a number of topics, and I think as Asante says, as we go into this, this is, this is gonna require some really important community conversation and some really important. Um perspectives, not just from you, but from other boards and commissions um as as that gets crafted, but it's time, it's it's really, really needed.
Yeah. Um and then also on here, you'll see the public art projects that um trail crossing that we just talked about is is one of those items. That will be coming back, we'll have um Amy Dukes come and and do sort of a joint meeting potentially with the Arts Commission too, to sort of showcase what that project. How that's uh shaping up and what that's gonna look like. Um and then uh we will be heading into another six-year CIP process as a city. Um so that's our capital improvement.
Plan?
Plan? Alright.
Program, that's a P.
It was like program? But um so our capital improvement pro- program and and projects, and that's really um where our our longer term. Capital projects are identified and sort of prioritized and looked at um citywide, so not just parks. But all of the other departments and divisions at the city sort of put this big plan together, it gets updated. Um we have one currently, that's how how the funding actually gets um sort of um triaged down. Um and so we will have an update for this, the next six-year process. Um and what what projects get sort of added into that will be dictated through some of the work that we've already done with the um park system plan. Um but there will be a couple of touches um for that process coming in twenty twenty five.
You may recall that six-year CIP gets updated every two years, so next year will be the the next update of that.
Yeah. And that's sort of our main work, projects, items to be bringing to you all as a board that will come. Sort of under our regular business section of the meetings. Um I wanted to to have an opportunity here for space for either questions about the items that are on there now. Um and opportunity for if there's anything that you feel like is missing from there that you'd like to see added.
Then this is first draft.
Yeah.
Are are you asking us to start giving you suggestions for when we want the touches to be for each of these items?
We could, we didn't.
A little early for that, or?
Probably a little early for the timeline stuff. I would love to hear what your thoughts are around timeline. Um because, I mean, some of it is gonna depend on sort of us and our own work plans and. When we think we're actually gonna have the time to tackle these items and then when they will be ready to actually bring to the board. Um but I'd love to hear if you have ideas for for timeline.
Yeah, that speaks to the priorities, right?
Yeah.
Well, I think some of the things I was thinking about um were, okay, so we have this capital project prioritization, which sounds like. Something that I think everybody would wanna get into to make sure that things that or feels are important or prioritize. Um but we may not really be able to do that right away if we're waiting on, you know, a broader uh CIP document to be generated or something.
Sort of led by um.
The finance.
Finance, not necessarily our department.
Get a sense of when that six-year CIP process kicks off. Typically, it's probably end of first quarter, second quarter is my guess, so. But but a great point, Chris, I mean, once we know that timeline, I think having at least a preliminary conversation with you all before we're in it would be. Hopefully, that's what I'm hearing you say.
Yeah, and and same similar or similarly with the municipal code, you know, the parts chapter. You know, what work has been done today on that, if anything? Uh other than maybe.
A lot of, a lot of conversation with city attorney, a lot of conversation about, okay, how would we go about tackling this, right? So I think it's more framing conversation um is where. You haven't been, haven't been building anything yet.
So.
Samples, I guess, another P, you know, another part of that has been, hey, we don't have to invent this from scratch as well, right? We have, how do other jurisdictions handle their parks chapter, and then how do we consolidate all these things within our code? We've started again thinking about that, yeah.
So we still have, do we still have to, we, since you still have to gather up all the bits and pieces that are distributed throughout the rest of the code?
Yes, yeah, all that works is yet to be, yet to be done, yeah.
That seems to push us to page one as the items that we can start on earlier.
Mm-hmm.
Ken?
Hi, yeah, and I had to step away for a moment, so I don't know if I missed it or not, but what I'm wondering. Uh as we look at this like work plan. I'm I'm looking for projects that were kind of midstream on, you know, Hillside Park, uh pedestrian park. Uh and also is that where it's just ongoing capital projects? Would that fall underneath there and? Uh do you have those that are kind of, you know, already started but not complete? Uh the status of those and how that might be impacted by, you know, this future planning?
Yeah, yeah, so that ongoing capital project item that's on there is is meant to capture that, so an update on Hillside Park. Um that will be finishing in twenty twenty five, an update on where we are once we start pedestrian park and senior center. Plazas that will also be finishing in twenty twenty five, and then the dog park. Um will also be one of those items that will sort of come back as an update. Um and then an opportunity for uh our sort of ribbon cutting and celebrations that will be happening for all of those parks once they're complete. So that's what that item is for.
Okay, that makes sense, thank you.
Anyone else feel like there's anything, I guess, missing in our discussions that we've been having of? Hey, this will come back to the board and you feel like it hasn't? Yeah.
Do we have any projects that are not under construction but that are? In sort of the design phase or, you know, planning and design phase, because we have the ongoing capital projects, is that where they would fall, I guess?
That is the only thing that we have currently is the dog park, so the Rainier Trail Dog Park is. But the design is finalized, um but we haven't taken it, we haven't submitted it for permits yet. There was some um additional sort of um regulation that we needed to to sort of button up some environmental review that needed to happen for that.
Just more studies we did with community planning and development, but yeah.
And three parts.
Yeah, yeah. So we, and just to finish that thread with the the budget reductions and the resizing of park planning, we're. We're gonna hold off on submitting that application, that permit application till we get farther along, we wrap up Hillside Park, we get pedestrian park. Um senior center farther into construction before we start that cycle, so. Right?
Right. So we don't have multiple and multiple construction companies that Robin has to manage.
Let's let's be, let's be, let's be smart and realistic with with, yeah.
Especially.
Yeah.
But yeah, those are still uh in in the works on the plan, that funding has not been, you know, changed in any way, so this will still be moving along.
The draft looks great.
Great. Thank you. No, but good to know that it feels like at the right, the right level and the right, and we're hitting all the right marks here. Um and then just a couple of administrative items, you know, we'll continue to review this work plan quarterly. Um making sure that we're sort of checking the boxes, hey, this item is gonna be, you know, maybe later and moving those things off of the work plan if, as we know, as we get further into the year. Um and then election of officers in May, we will have um a recruitment cycle for new members coming up. Um in February and March, um and those positions, um we do have a few positions that will be ending in April of twenty twenty five. Um and so those, as those vacancies um open up, if people are interested in in. Continuing on the board and reapplying to stay in those positions, that will be an opportunity. Um and then we will have sort of new members, um if we have any new members starting in May, and so we'll do election for chair and vice chair positions again. Um and then uh just a couple of. Just a couple of items for sort of our Recreation and Park Operations Department to sort of come and give updates throughout the year. Um this have always been sort of um nice additions for the board to sort of hear from those groups. But yeah, that's, that's pretty much the work plan. Um we will start working on sort of the timing and and cadence of when these things will fill in. Likely will fill in sort of first and second quarter and then sort of leave third and fourth quarter a little bit open. Um and that'll just be based on our own work plan, so um in December we'll be doing that work. Um to sort of figure out the timing for this and we'll share that at our January meeting. So with that, I will stop sharing this item and.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Asante.
Okay, with that then, uh we'll move on to reports. Do you have a directory report or?
Uh yeah, I suppose a few items I I wanna touch on. Capital projects, uh I think we we highlighted these um a little more specific, you're gonna notice um some signs up, some construction notice signs up. Um if you're down on the intersection up front and Sunset or behind uh pedestrian park or over by the senior center. I think we had announced that uh that contract was awarded. Um thank you, Robin, for all your prep and work. Uh we're gonna have a pre-con, pre-construction uh meeting uh next week.
Next Thursday.
Thursday, to be more specific, uh so um as we head into December, we'll see a lot more construction activity down there. Unfortunately, just so you know, it is gonna mean some disruption, namely the parking lot that is between City Hall and the Senior Center. Uh we've been working with our seniors and our senior center staff to notify them, that parking lot's going to need to be closed as part of this project. More because of the awkward circulation in that parking lot and that the, as the plaza area in front of the senior center is worked on and expanded. Um once you're in that parking lot, there'd be no way to to circulate and and get out of it, so. Contractor will be using a little of that as as move. Sorry, so um don't mean to get in all those details, but construction will will create a little bit of disruption on an old town. We're gonna do everything we can to to minimize that as the, as that project gets completed. And the only other item I have is is um real quickly, uh I think we've mentioned some of the activity happening at Samamish Cove Park. Uh if you're familiar, Samamish Cove Park is right next to Lake Samamish State Park, a big open space area that we own. Um I think if you recall, uh we had mentioned that Washington Department of Transportation um has to do a number of fist passage projects. Uh boy, say that, I pass that, fish passage projects um under I ninety. Uh that has met their interest and desire of utilizing a portion of Samamish Cove to do that work.
Uh, that has met uh their interest and desire of utilizing a portion of San Amish Cove to do that work. Um, um, I think we've also mentioned in in prior months um, a prior commitment that the city made in the development agreement to Rowley. There was a um underground utility that was going to be allowed uh to be done with that site. Um, Robin and I have been doing a lot of work with both of those agencies. Uh, we've also done a lot of work recently with the Recreation Conservation Office, which is the state um office that provides grants of for us. Um, long story short, um, I can't remember how much I I mentioned this to you before, but um King County, when they bought San Amish Cove Park before it was given to the city, uh, they utilized some grant funds. Um, long story short, we've been working with um RCO on a conversion um of that utility, that addition of that utility is going to require a conversion. What a conversion means is we're going to have to go buy some additional um parkland to take the place of that area. So um, not to get into all the details, sorry, I'm making a a short story long now, but um we've gotten uh good uh feedback and good work with RCO, that conversion process as well on its way. Um, and we're aligning that with some other strategic acquisition work that we we are doing um on a number of priority parcels as we've been working on the park plan. Um, and we'll be um updating City Council and Executive Session on on um how all of that sort of comes together and aligns. Um, and I think we could start to see some pretty important acquisitions begin to start to line up um in 25, 26, um, in in the years beyond. Uh, but again, I, because they're parcel specific, I can't, I can't give you specifics, but just to say, as I was saying earlier in the budget process, there's some really, really important work still to be done in in 2025 and beyond. And so things are are lining up um really well on that front.
Thank you. Uh, I did not have a report tonight, apologize for things you're a little hectic.
Yes. Well, thanks for being here.
Glad to be here. Uh, any other business or announcements?
I do have one regarding our uh Isicua Youth Advisory Board members. Um, so I went and spoke with the youth board um a couple of weeks ago, and I have a couple of of members that are interested. And so I'll be discussing with them that opportunity through December, and we will potentially have some uh youth members joining us in the new year.
Yeah. Anyone else? Uh, okay, uh, then with that, I guess the meeting, oh.
Just one thought, just a reminder that as our November meeting, we typically don't meet in December.
Yes.
So um, weird to say, we're we're so far into the, you know, holidays, this was likely our last meeting of the year, so. Great holiday season, we'll see you in 2025. Again, roll up our sleeves, lots to do. If you have questions on budget as as the budget adoption's happening, um, please reach out to us. Um, Asanti and I haven't talked about this all the way through, but with that long of an extension, uh, perhaps there's opportunity to have a chance to meet with each of you individually and and just sort of check in and have a opportunity to connect. So have a great, great holiday season.
Real quick, was that a a wave goodbye, Tim?
Or a
Or a hand raised? Okay, a wave goodbye. All right.
All right.
Uh, with that, the meeting is adjourned, thank you everyone.
Sixteen?